To the, I call the Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, meeting of the Grafton Mass Board of Library Trustees to Order. Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well in this really wild time of year.
Yeah.
And jumping right into our first agenda item, but actually, I will back up and welcome first, Shannon Phelan, our Administrative Assistant and Scribe, and thank you to our Assistant Town Administrator, William Blake, for joining us and filling us in and providing expertise on some of these agenda items, so.
I wouldn't go that far. Input, maybe not expertise.
Expertise, okay, input. So now, jumping right into Agenda Item One, Director Resignation, Job Posting and Search and Contract. As we all know, Beth Schreiber attended her resignation as of December 11th, 2023, and want to personally thank her for all of her commitment and expertise provided and leadership over the years, including the new library building. And so, I guess, without jumping ahead to what we do next, I'll take some thoughts and possibly a motion on a letter, a substantive letter to her on behalf of the board.
I'll second that motion.
I think you need to make the motion, right?
Yeah.
I thought.
Yeah, in other words, let me know what you're looking for. In other words, maybe with some detail or who would draft that and.
Well, I think we need to make a motion and have discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's why I said I seconded the motion, because you proposed.
All right, so I guess then, then I basically, as I sometimes do, I said I basically entertain a motion to send a letter to Beth on behalf of the board.
So moved.
So he said so moved, and then you're seconding it?
Or vice versa.
All right.
Yep.
All right. And so, and then we can just, you know, we have a packed agenda, so at a high level, discuss what that would be and how much of a blank check you would want the author to have in drafting that letter. I don't want to get caught up in the weeds of trying to draft wording of a specific letter.
I think it should just be, you know, not even a full-page letter, you know, just really just to acknowledge her contributions.
Sure.
And thanking her for her contributions over the years and, you know, being part of the Board of Library Trustees. And really, it should be specific to, I think, what she meant to us as a board.
Sure.
I would say.
Okay.
That'd be my thought. Any other thoughts?
I agree. I mean, she had an incredible impact on the library, you know, since she started, so definitely in favor of writing something.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting that I write it, though. I'm not the best, I'm not the best writer.
And one of the things I want to mention is, and this kind of got us tripped up in the past, is that that once we adjourn tonight, the idea of input from any more than three people really is not something we should have, because that would be deliberating outside of a meeting on an agenda item. And so.
Yeah, so I think it's appropriate for the chair, if you're willing to do so, to write a letter on our behalf.
Yes, and I will, I'll chalk one up to a lot of the input from folks around town on social media who really weighed in on some very specific things that will actually, you know, give me some more specific, you know, points.
I know Dana did a very nice, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's good.
Dana did a really nice update on Facebook. I would definitely recommend reaching out to her, because she's worked extremely closely with Beth over the years on the whole experience.
And it's funny you mentioned her input, because that's actually what I was pointing to.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, all right, so any.
But it's okay if we send you a couple bullet points, like just our comments?
Well, no, because what would happen is, is that none of us individually would know whether that would constitute or eventually lead to a quorum deliberating on an action item.
Yep, okay.
Outside of a posted meeting, so you just need to be careful of those serial conversations.
Yeah, so on that point, it's different than asking for feedback on something that you've written to let it be discussed at, you know, at another.
I know, I know, and that may be ahead of ourselves on the, on the Subcommittee, because that was one of the items we were going to discuss about the difference between polling and serial conversations. But I understand what you, the distinction you're pointing to, but.
Yeah, it's really no decisions that the board's making, it's just commentary, but, okay.
I, I'm going to ask for the trust that I will cover the substantive points and such, unless you had some type of objection to that.
Well, it seems like Doug might have something else he wants to say in that letter. I think if you're not prepared to say it now, that's fine. I think it's appropriate, maybe if you want to talk offline with, you know, directly with.
I just don't, I haven't thought through it yet. That's why I can't say it now.
I just have to be careful that, among us now, that we have to be cautious about, you know, making sure that no more than three people have, you know.
No, it's just to Aaron's point about it's coming from the board, right? So specific things that she did and did for the board, you know, and interactions with the board.
All right, all right. Any further discussion on the motion then? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Five, nothing. All right, job posting and search, okay, so.
So on this topic, right, so the resignation, who accepts her resignation as a town?
So, all right, so here's, I talked to Evan about that, and so historically, all right, we know that we've had numerous conversations that have talked about in practice, you know, who was reporting to whom, and there was some, a little bit of ambiguity in practice. The letter had been addressed to the town administrator, even though technically she reports to us. So I think the intent of the letter has been sort of effectuated, that, that, that there's a resignation even though it was technically not addressed to us.
So my only point was, do we have to accept her resignation as a board, you know?
I guess, I guess it can't, it can't hurt to do so.
Okay.
Because I guess, I guess, maybe having been ahead of myself, that, that, and I don't want to go back and maybe combine two things, but the letter that we just voted on wouldn't necessarily acknowledge that we've received her resignation, but the fact that it goes out necessarily has to mean that we've somehow, you know, the letter's going out not because she didn't resign, but that she did. So I will accept the motion for the, just at least to have it on record for the Board of Library Trustees to accept or, I guess, receive the letter resignation.
I'll make a motion to, I would say, I would say, accept the director's resignation.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. So at least it's on record that we're acknowledging that in the minutes. I think it went to the, through the town administrator's office, just because the leave had been administered by, you know, your office. So probably doesn't make a difference in the way things are, roll out, right, William? As far as, I mean, whether we had accepted it or not.
Not particularly.
Right.
Because I don't think you could say no to the resignation.
Right, right, in other words, you're right. In other words, it's more of a sort of acknowledging in a formality that whether we say accept or receive, we can't undo that. So, so as far as job posting and search, the MBLC has a number of recommendations about where to, aside from their own website, where to post these things. Couple of moving parts on this. The job posting today, thank you, William, for sending me that information, which was the, the job description, okay, of the library director that's on file, as well as the step rate of where she was at upon her departure. And so, based on that job description, we need to come up with some type of wording which presents that this position is open, and how much information we want to sort of compress from that job description, and who would write that for posting, at least for starters, on the MBLC website.
Yep, so generally, when a job is posted, I mean, she's, how many years was Beth with us? Eight to 10 years?
Like 12, I think it was in 2012.
Twenty while, right, so you can imagine that what the town was looking for in 2012 may be different from what we're looking for today. So I would just say that, you know, we should probably look this over, somebody should be responsible for either rewriting it or seeing what we want to do, you know, or look for in a director.
So would you, William, would you say that this is an up-to-date job description, or has it been updated at all?
The job description was rewritten in 2021, when we did the wage and classification study with the Collins Center.
Okay.
And every employee provided input on their position when that was written.
Okay.
So that was just redone two years ago at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely written for the new library.
And I noticed that, that it talked about a 20,000, 26,000 or so square foot library, so yes.
And all the conference rooms and community rooms and stuff.
Okay, but I didn't get a chance to read it.
Saved us a lot of time, though, knowing that it's current.
Yeah.
All right.
But wouldn't we, sorry, wouldn't we just post this as a job description with some kind of introductory paragraph that says, I don't know, I'm just.
You could. When I do job postings for the town, I typically take the elements of the job description and synthesize it down to a one-pager, and that's what we post, like the Mass Municipal Association webpage and things like that.
Yep, okay.
With some sort of notice that a complete job description can be found on the Grafton website.
Just like a one-pager.
This is three and a half pages.
Yeah, this is way too long.
I can provide the chair with a copy of what we have done before.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Not for this particular position, but for other postings.
Okay, and the thing is, not to, we, we're not going to plagiarize other towns, but there are some other director positions open on the MBLC website, so you can kind of get a flavor of what, how that's worded. So we're typically worded. There's a few of them out there.
And do we have the original job description back from when Beth was hired? The reason why I ask is because writing policy with Beth over the years, we can tend to have very long policies to make sure everything is covered. She's very good at covering every angle. Like, if this is four pages, I wonder what the one previous looked like.
She gave that, she gave me a copy a few months back.
Of the original from 2012?
Yeah, or I don't know if it was from 2012, but she said that the private town administrator had given it to her. So it was, I, I'm going to assume the previous copy that may have existed for a number of years without having been updated.
Yeah, I think I only mention it just because I know the way that she writes, and she's going to be as thorough as possible, especially when she's talking about her, she was talking about her current job, to make sure everything was covered and salaries were properly covered and whatnot, so.
But I don't know what input she had regarding that document, though.
Yeah.
So maybe, I think we, I mean, I would recommend starting from scratch with one of us with the hat on contracting things. Who wants to get out there?
I mean, I'd be glad to be with someone else on the group to write a one-page job description.
Okay, like, do you want to?
I mean, I tend to do like an introductory paragraph that says how exciting this job is or whatever, and then a bunch of bullet points.
And I think sometimes people include a high, at a high level, what, you know, the area.
Yeah.
You know, Grafton is a town that, then a few talking points, and then getting into the description.
I mean, it's certainly an exciting position. I would think we'd be, you know, a lot of people would be interested in applying for it. All right, I mean, the library's in a really exciting position.
All right, so posting a letter, Doug and Raj, is everyone okay with Doug and myself coming up with a high-level?
Is it something that we're going to have to vote on as a board to finalize?
Maybe, I don't know. And William, did you want input on any of that, or to kind of look it over?
Nope.
All right, that's fine. Speaking of, for the courtesy.
I appreciate that, but if the library director's going to report to this body, I'll leave it up to this body.
All right, sounds good. Okay, and.
So the question was, would this be something that we would vote on?
Right.
As a group?
I think we should.
Yeah, I think it's a substantive enough document to lead into our search that we would want to do it. I, I'm, I know it's a busy time of year now.
Yep.
But I think I'm ready, willing, and able to, to spend some time, even if we have to call an extra meeting, just for the purposes of what will be some, I guess, heavy lifting, just for this item and search.
So I would say that a final draft from you and Doug, then we could have a special meeting.
Sure.
Provide some, maybe last-minute input. If we were able to see it ahead of time, I think would be great.
Right.
And then we can just decide to vote on, I mean, what, you know, John had at our last special meeting was great, because he had some things he wanted to say, and he went through them, and it was very effective.
Okay.
So I think if we can do that.
Yeah, as long as we save our comments for the meeting.
Yep.
And our input.
Yep.
So, all right.
I just want to make a clarification. So there's, we need, we need two documents. We need kind of the full listing, which we have the basis for, which is this three-and-a-half-page document, right? And then we need the one-pager.
Well, you have the three-and-a-half pager. I sent it today to the trustees.
Right, but are we, are we keeping that as is, or do we want to review that as well?
No, no, William was saying that, that in 2021, that that whole job description was rewritten to reflect the position as it currently exists under the new building. It's not under the old building.
Right.
I think we should just look through it quickly, but if this is the full description that, you know, is available on the website or something like that, and we come up with a one-pager, I think that'd be sufficient, but it'd be worth going through this, just to make sure everything's relevant.
Okay, yeah, and then.
Yeah, I'm not saying we need to rewrite it. I was more just saying, like, we should just review it to make sure.
Oh, absolutely.
It, you know, reflects what we are, what we're all thinking.
Yep.
Because there are a lot of items in here that I would think someone else in the library would be managing, not necessarily the director. I mean, it would be under the director's purview, but there'd be someone else.
Yeah, just because the director was doing it at that time doesn't mean it's what we're looking at the director to do going forward, although they could be responsible for all of it, but.
Yes, I noticed there were some areas that I had questions on as well, as far as who did what. Didn't, you're right, I agree with that statement.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go to a, be happy to go to a special meeting, but probably before our next meeting in January.
Right.
Would be the goal.
Yes.
Because we'd probably want to get this out sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah, assuming we want to get it off at the beginning of the year, right?
Yes, I, sooner rather than later, yes. So job, all right, so search committee, okay? As far as our own internal policies regarding ad hoc committees, aside from the chair appointing all committees, that was under our section of our own bylaws under officers. Under committees, in our own bylaws, special committees for the study and investigation of special problems or for the performance of specially assigned tasks may be appointed by the chairperson or the board. Such committees shall function as ad hoc committees and shall consider only for that purpose for which they were appointed, they shall disband when their work has been completed. So right now, it's not clear who would be the, it could be either or, as far as who the appointing authority is, and who would we want on this search committee? Who? How many? Whether we need to make a separate charge? And then us becoming familiar with the open meeting law regulations as they pertain to preliminary meetings versus finalist meetings? Open meeting law does speak to those finer points, as far as what needs to be public. And I'm not sure, and I'll, I'll ask you, William, whether or not you have familiarity with whether the open meeting law speaks more to like town administrator appointments, or whether it has to do with any search committees? And when, the difference between what needs to be a public meeting or not regarding finalists? Do you have any familiarity with that?
I do not.
Okay.
No, I would.
I'll do, I'll do some reading.
I don't. I wouldn't want to hazard a guess on that, misleading you.
All right, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll look into that piece of the open meeting law, and if need be, ask the Attorney General's Office, but we do have a task at hand as far as, this isn't just going to happen on its own, that we will eventually be, as a board of trustees, taking a recommendation from a search committee and voting on a finalist to finally, you know, to eventually hire. So what happened last time? Who was on that?
That's a really great question, because I think Dana would have been someone who.
She, I was on the search committee, she wasn't.
You were.
It was actually headed by the Assistant Town Administrator at the time, and there was somebody reporting to him. I'll have to go back to my notes and find them, but I was on it. Hank Puller was another trustee. I think we were the two trustees.
Was it, were they general?
Amanda DiArbrough was on it. She was a trustee, but she also was a children's librarian, so I think at that time, she was still in her role as children's librarian. I don't think she was a trustee then.
So were they, were they at-large members? Like, how was it decided who would sit on it?
It was all, so this is the thing that's so different, is the fact that the position is reporting to us. It was, it was, we did not have the final say. Like, we accepted applications, we interviewed, and we narrowed it down to two candidates, and the final decision was actually made by Tim McNerney, and he extended the offer. So this is completely different than what we did, and, you know, I know this is, this is the appropriate way to do it, but that just was absolutely not the way it was done.
Okay, we're sounding fresh, because we, we need to determine then, you know, who, who, how many people, whether there's, and I don't know, I'll throw another question at you, William. I know that now that we have a, a union agreement, whether or not you are, you know, someone such as yourself would sit on, would have input, or would feel comfortable having input or sitting on such a search committee?
So if you wanted the input of the town administrator's office, I think I could talk to Evan and probably assist with that.
Okay.
That wouldn't really have much to do with the union agreement.
Okay.
I do know that the union has expressed interest in having a member of staff on the search committee.
And I, and I saw that as far as who, and so who would that be? I know that.
So if the board decided to allow that, which I would recommend wholeheartedly.
I agree with that.
They would like to discuss it as a group and nominate somebody to be their representative.
Okay.
Do we think like two trustees, Assistant Town Administrator, and then a staff? Is that enough for people?
So I think, to your point is, I think it's great to have somebody from the town to help evaluate, you know, a future employee, but is it really necessary?
No.
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 Is, should we have someone from, from the town be part of this committee, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I mean, isn't someone in the, is the town involved with pretty much every other hire in town, including?
Obviously, it's unique.
I know we're unique, but I'm just.
So the, the most comparable example would be the fire chief.
Right.
And that was done entirely by the select board, because the fire chief reports to them.
Right, okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I'm just wondering what aspect of the, of the, you know, criteria or search criteria would, would the town offices?
Well, this person's going to have to interact with the town administrators, they're going to have to work together, you know, with budgeting, you know, spending bills, so.
So there's a lot, there's an aspect to the job that isn't just what the trustees evaluate.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do you feel comfortable sitting on a committee, or I know you're pretty stretched out in your role, and so it's a loaded question. And we, I guess we're agreeing that it may not be necessary to actually sit in those meetings, but provide input, but.
Yeah, I think I could make time for that, if that's what the board wanted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And so, so, so far, we have two trustees, Assistant Town Administrator. At least one library employee, or the, maybe two?
I think just a union representative would be fine from the staff.
That's what I would think, too.
Okay.
If I recall from the previous search, Carrie, that all the trustees saw the applicants as far as, like, the CVs? Just for informational purposes.
I saw all of them, so I don't remember, like.
I'm pretty sure I saw all of them, like, just for an information, like, here's another applicant, here's another applicant, but the search committee was the one who actually went in and talked to them and interviewed them and recommended them, so.
Yeah.
So, so two trustees, ATA, that's your, that's your acronym, Assistant Town Administrator, a union rep. If we were to have members of the public, we would, as a board, have to vet out applicants in an open meeting, and I.
Yes, I went back and I looked through the agendas for the TA search.
Yeah.
When the TA screening committee, a subcommittee, met, they met in executive session to interview people. As far as scheduling those interviews, it looked like they had to meet in open session to schedule them.
Okay.
They did the interviews in executive session, narrowed it down to the three finalists, and those were interviewed by the board and public.
All right, so, all right, so it's only when you're down to the three finalists that, yeah, it needs to be open, yes. Did you have a question, Carrie?
No.
Okay.
So, so are we agreeing that public need to help hire?
I, I think, I think the public would appreciate, I mean, there's thousands, thousands of people that, that are out there who have regularly gone to the library and are familiar with it. And I could imagine that people would want to be interested, but if we did that, we would have to vet those people out in a public session.
Yeah, so, so on the other side, we as trustees are advocates for the public, so we would be kind of speaking on their behalf.
Right, as elected officials.
And if, if we felt the public wanted to be heard, we, we would interact with the public and bring their views to, you know, the discussion. I don't think it's something that, you know, we would, I don't know who would show up for that, maybe, maybe a lot, maybe nobody. But I think certainly, you know, that's kind of our job is, is to be advocates.
Right, and normally, subcommittees also have five, I mean, an odd number, so right now, we're at four. Typically, a search committee, how large is a search committee, William, for the town administrator's search? Was it five, seven? Was it more or less?
I believe it was less than that. I, I would say five or less. I think anything beyond that, you start to get a little, little unruly.
Okay, all right. I mean, we could, all right, so we could either go five or two trustees, a union rep with input from the Assistant Town Administrator, or have William be one of those five people, and we would add one.
So about the number, I don't think this is a voting committee, a subcommittee, rather, so it doesn't really matter.
They're making a recommendation, though, right?
They can make a, so are they going to be voting on, you know, I want these top three, and somebody says, no, I want these top three? And I don't know if it's, necessarily you need to have an odd or even number to break a stalemate.
But do we even, do we ever find ourselves, or do people, search committees find themselves making a recommendation that may not be unanimous? And then that's why, that's why I come up with the odd number.
Yeah. I don't know. I've never been on one.
But I think that would be fine, like, if we had like four or five people, and then we had a difference of opinion, like, two people liked one person, three people liked the other, in the larger, like, there's, you know, there's seven of us, you know, on the board, then we can, you have a discussion about why we favor one or the other, what the pros and cons are, so then we can make a more informed decision.
I mean, I'm not married, I'm not married to the, I'm not married to the idea of an even number, all right?
Yeah, that was my point. If we feel that we're just adding a fifth person just to get an odd number, I don't think that's a good reason.
All right, I mean, normally, aside from the sort of social expectation of a chair necessarily being part of that group, what are people's thoughts on? what are people's thoughts on the chair necessarily needing to be part of that group?
I don't think it's necessary. The chair has a lot of, a lot of duties, you know, otherwise. And it's, unless you felt strongly that you wanted to be on that committee, then, then I would entertain it, but it's not necessary.
I, I will, I will say that I agree with that comment. And I will also concede that just because I'm chair, I am the new guy, I'm the new person here. There are folks way more, with way more experience than these maddus than me.
Inverse about library matters, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Those, those are people we want on the search committee.
And so, I would, I would concede that point that there are folks that would probably be able to provide better input and perspective than I would.
Yeah, I'd like to see Doug on that committee if you're willing, if that's what they want to consider.
Yeah.
You know, if anybody else would like to voice their, their own opinion, they'd like to be on that committee as well.
I know, and we have.
You've been on that committee before too.
Yeah, and I, I, we have two members absent who have been unable to weigh in.
Yeah, that's true. Can we just decide on the, what it looks like as far as numbers and then figure out who's on that?
Yep.
Yep.
Down the road?
Yep.
That's fine, that's fine. So, so we could probably just make that a vote during the, our next meeting?
I would say so, yeah. We can, because we don't even have that job description out yet.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then Dr. Deshada and I will be working on getting the contract language together. The, the MBLC had some good templates anyway. And so, I don't think it's going to be rocket science coming up with language. I know that whatever final draft there will be is something that we would need to discuss as a board, but also vet by our Labor Council, Mark Terry, for form and making sure that it's all in compliance with the way contracts should read. There's a lot of laws that need to be adhered to as well. And so, question though, and, and I'll, I'll put you on the spot, William. With the Town Administrator's Search, and when we're talking about contracts, I know that strategy for negotiations and negotiations themselves are things that typically an executive board would go into, you know, executive session on. Since our prior director was not, did not have a contract and we're actually right now drafting a contract without any particular candidate in mind, do those discussions on, are you aware, one way or the other, whether those discussions on the particulars of a contract, even though they're not a negotiation with a particular person, whether those can be done in executive session or can we assert executive session on that? Do you know? Just generally coming up with contract language, even if there's no negotiation with a particular person, either for the first time or for renewal of a contract? It's just one of those weird things that we're dealing with because she, our prior director was working with, we're creating a contract for the first time.
Yeah. I, I don't know the hard and fast answer to that. I, so the, the negotiation of the contract is 100% in executive session.
Right.
I believe the parameters of, you know, what you can negotiate, you would want to establish that probably before you do the job posting because you want to put the salary in the job posting. And that, I believe, you would do in executive session.
Okay, okay. Alright. And I could always seek advice from the AG's office anyway regarding the parameters of that generally.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they've been very responsive, by the way. They usually get back to you within a day or two. Okay, moving forward. So, wait, not moving forward yet. So, we will vote on who would be on that, but with the understanding that even though we haven't taken a vote, by consensus, we're in agreement with the library staff having representation. I, I know I am.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Just to follow up, the Town Administrator's Search Committee was nine members.
Oh, wow.
It, it was a member of the select board, a member of the school committee, a member of the planning board, one member of the Board of Trustee, this Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Two members of the finance committee and three members at large.
Okay.
Would not recommend a nine-member committee for the library director.
Everything you said made perfect sense because of the position that they were hiring for.
Right.
Yep.
Right, okay. No, thank, thank you for looking into that. Where are you pulling these things up from?
The all-knowing Colleen Roy, who was on the board at the time and has all this information.
Oh, I, I, yep, yeah, she'd be the one. Yep, absolutely. Alright, so we'll, we can always revisit that at our, at our next meeting, but, alright, so. Alright, are we ready to move on to library staffing update?
Yes.
Alright, Debbie Jackson. You've been just waiting there patiently.
Wait a minute. Where are we? Number two.
So, the agenda was updated.
Oh, don't have that.
And so, you have, you have a hard copy.
Okay. Thanks.
I did email the amended agenda today. And I apologize, I didn't have this finalized and I just realized I left an incomplete sentence at the bottom there. So, that speaks to the staffing shortage right now. I am not sitting over here anymore because I'm no longer in administration. I'm the head of teen services now, which puts me on the management team.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. It's very exciting, very exciting. Come by the teen room, it's all glittery and there's little lights everywhere. It's super fun down there. But we have weekly meetings with William. We have it on our radar. What a pickle we are about to be in. We're looking at 10 weeks since the director went on leave, so we're down 350 hours just from her being out, that we've been working short. We have a number of staff leave issues that have come up that have been approved prior to any departures. We have staff medical leave that can't be avoided. The staff hours, just the 26th through the 30th, without a director, our borrower services manager, Cara Disandolat, has accepted a position at Marlboro. Library is within walking distance to her home. We're all very excited for her, but sad for us. So, that week we're gonna be down 70 hours. Sarah, I'm sorry, who was that again? Cara Disandolat. Sarah Bannister has vacation that week. That leaves Heidi and myself as two of what is normally a five-member management team to work in the library. The number of staff hours from January 1st to the 8th, as well as the 13th through mid-February, we're gonna be down 95 hours with, without a director, without a borrower services manager. And we have 25 hours of staff leave that were approved six months ago. From the 9th through the 13th, we're gonna be down 115 hours. We have another staff member who, who will be out for medical leave. What we have come up with is a way to preserve our energy, to do the best that we can in the circumstances. And we would like to ask the board to consider proposing these, this proposal that we have for winter hours. We would like to cut back the hours, the opening hours of the library a little bit in order to shift staff members so that we have a more, with fewer staffing gaps. We're proposing this Tuesday, January 1st through Monday, March 4th. We're looking at a several months-long search for a director. And we are looking at at least a couple of months-long search for a borrower services manager. And we have these other leave issues that we, that I just spoke about. If you look, I made a little chart for you, the current opening hours. We're open 11 hours a day, Monday through Thursday. Friday and Saturday, we're open eight hours for a total of 60 hours. Per MBLC, we're only required to be open 50 hours a week, according to our population, which is in the 17,000 range.
Are you sure about the 17 grand range?
I looked it up today, yes.
I thought our population was closer to 20,000, or did they update it sort of like the census?
I don't know.
I thought we were over 18. I thought we were over 18.
It's still not over 20, which is 20 or 25 is the next bump up.
Yeah, no, it's probably close to 19.
Okay.
Not over 10.
So, we're still within the 50?
We're still within the 50-hour range.
Okay, okay.
What we're proposing is to be open 10 to 8, as opposed to 10 to 9, Monday through Thursday. We have found, there's a note at the bottom, we found that many evenings between 8:00 and 9:00 PM, there are more staff members than there are patrons in the library. We don't think that would be, it'd be a greater impact with, for staff than it would, what we would feel for patrons. And then 10 to 3 on Friday and Saturday. The Friday, Saturdays, if you're familiar with our schedule, is a rotation where half the staff works Friday, half the staff works Saturday. So, originally it was, it was brought up as a Saturday solution, but it has to be for Friday as well.
Okay.
And if you, when you look at the number of hours per day that we're saving and then the staff hours, by taking 10 hours away from our opening hours, we're actually saving 62.5 staff hours.
Okay.
That can be shifted to another, to other times during the day. People can come in earlier. If someone works 1 to 9, they can come in 12 to 8. There will be no, no cut in hours for anyone. Let's try one here. It gives us the 50 hours per week that we need. We are down to two, well, no, I don't know why I have it, we're down to two people here, three people, we're down two people. So, we have three people in management right now. Susan Lido is coming out of retirement, part-time, to help us out in borrower services.
Stay away.
She can't, she can't. And she's gonna be doing about 20 hours a week to help out as an interim borrower services manager, but we're still feeling the effects of that. We are interviewing, we were interviewing for the part-time children's position that's been open for a while and from that, we're getting some temps. But the reality is that in order to bring someone else in, someone has to train them. And staff are really burned out right now. Management is really stretched thin, getting, while we could get a large number of temps to fill these positions, getting them properly trained to do the job in a way that would not exhaust current staff is, would be very challenging. And then instead of winter hours, we'll allow staff, and I think it was just kind of some room to breathe, some room to recover and to, to kind of work smarter, not harder in this, in this season. So, we're asking that, that you consider that as a, as the most effective solution for the issue that we're facing.
Alright.
May I start?
Yes, please.
This is fantastic. Thank you for bringing a proposed plan for something for us to review. Because, you know, certainly you have a problem and you propose a solution and we as a board can say, you know, this looks great, you know, we approve and, you know, alleviate some of the stress that's on the staff and, and the hours. I, I'm apt to approve this. The only, the only issue that, that I see is evening hours, right? So, we're cutting, in, in all cases, we're cutting evening hours. And, and I know to your point, you did the analysis and you said, well, there's very few patrons in the library at that time, which is, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with that. The, the meeting room usage, I think would be difficult to accommodate in 8 o'clock closing time for those who might have evening meetings, because we didn't have really meeting rooms before. Now, we have a new library and we have lots of great meeting rooms. I don't know what that means for, you know, groups like the Cub Scouts, they don't, and the, and the Girl Scouts, they don't meet into the late, late evening, but I know at times, there's a lot of groups that are in, in meeting rooms at that time and, you know, I think that might cause some unhappiness for people who use the library for meetings.
Your thoughts?
I know Shannon can maybe speak to this too because she's been gathering meeting room statistics. We don't, we haven't typically had very many groups using, it's mostly individuals using it for study in conferences. We do have occasionally Girl Scouts, occasionally Boy Scouts, but those groups typically wrap up. They're not there until 9 o'clock at night as well. They're usually 8, 8:30, which accommodations could be.
Okay. I, I li- I like that the, the detail and the really digging in that you've done on this to really come up with a solution that, that is not turning everything on its ear, but making certain tweaks to, to try to minimize, you know, negative impact. But I, I would rather have this type of solution rather than trying to spread the frosting too thin on the cake and then have people even more, really, for lack of a better term, either stressed out or going in, you know, not having enough staff to do things. Any thoughts, William, at all? Just figured, let you weigh in if you had any thoughts.
I, so I spoke to Debbie and the management team about this today. I spoke to Evan about it. The town has no issue with this. I actually think it's great that the management team took so much initiative and put together a comprehensive, workable solution. You know, and the big thing is no staff hours will be lost, so that's a big thing with the CBA, so we are covered on all fronts there.
Awesome. Yeah, and that, that was one of the main points too, that, that you're saying no staff hours would be lost.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. So, I just had one thought and then a question. So.
Sure.
I mean, I, every time, I feel like my family is, is one of the random families that's there late at night, past 8. Yeah, and I feel like I see you there sometimes. So, but, but, but we're like the only ones there and, and I'm not complaining about that. So, I, I think that's a, a good solution there. But I was curious, just even anecdotally, like, what do we think the impact will be of the three hours lost on the end of Friday and Saturday? How, how busy are those times?
Friday is actually busier than Saturday and that was one of the things that I thought of as head of teen services too, is that my kids, at least for the time being, wouldn't have a place on Fridays, or just for a short period of time. It's one of those things that, if we're looking at it, I don't know other ways around this. I, I really don't, like, we, hiring new staff, we can, we can bring them in, but getting people hired and adequately trained is gonna wear people out as well. I don't know. I, I honestly, that was one of the things that was brought up. It was brought up to cut them from 10 to 6 to 10 to 2 and mathematically, that doesn't work out. So, we went at 3 o'clock. If there's a proposed solution on that, I don't, an alternate solution on that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't.
It's not gonna be ideal.
I wasn't criticizing, I was just curious about, you know.
That's a great, that's a great point. You know, I've been, I get out of work at 4. I usually go over to the library on Fridays, you know, 4 on Fridays. And, you know, that's when you see a lot of the teens there between that 4 and 5 o'clock hour. So, is there any thought to, we seem to be taking from the evening hours, you know, every day of the week? So, is there a possibility to leave the, the 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock on a Friday, you know, opt to take away from one other day like a Monday? I mean, I know, i- is the library just, it's so busy at 10 AM? Is that, is that because of the, the children or?
I, I guess my thought is, like, 10 o'clock is, for some people, is kind of late, like, for morning people, like, people with babies and toddlers, like, so that would be time that they would do, like, want to do story hours, like, you know, when we're able to do that. So, that would be my concern, like, if we don't open at 10, like, if we're opening at 11.
That seems very late, anything.
Well, I, I meant just one day to, to get the hours on a Friday back, you know, for those teens that really would need that.
So, do 11, so maybe open 11 on Fridays and Saturdays, so 11 to 4? Would that be feasible?
You know what, honestly, I take back what I said because, because there's, there's four days during the week where teens can use the library and there's one day that they wouldn't be able to use it.
And the other thing is that there's a consistency there on the front end. I'm wondering how many people would really keep, be able to keep track of a shifting schedule. This, this solution that's proposed keeps the opening at 10 o'clock every day that it's open. And, and I know that as a patron, I would, in my mind, be like, okay, I can count on 10 o'clock being the, the one time that is the constant and then having only to be more mindful of the end time.
Do we have, do you have access to the door counters? Like, can we actually look at numbers about when people are coming in?
We do. I, I, we've.
I don't know if it's broken out by time. I don't know if it's that detailed, but I can make a note to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at, we've had staff who have, as Carrie mentioned, have, we have a lot of our children's department too, who have expressed an interest and down the road, maybe revisiting the, the opening hours to open earlier and close earlier, especially for their population, because if you're a parent, if you've had small children, you know that 10 AM is nap time.
Yeah.
So, storytimes need to be before that, but that's kind of a different discussion for a different day, but.
And this, this solution actually would require a vote tonight because it's for January 1.
Right.
Through, or.
January 2nd.
Through, or, through, through my, or January.
January second, yes.
January second.
January second.
Uh, through March fourth.
Okay. And I know, I know Aaron asked this already, but like, could, let's just say Friday, if we wanted to extend it one hour, you don't think like a bibliotemp, if we hired that kind of staff for that extra hour? I mean, I guess it's going to be hard. You can't really hire somebody for an hour, so. I'm just thinking, can we, we hire it and, and then get somewhere in between where we can stay open another hour Friday or Saturday?
I mean, this is just temporary, right? So at, and you were, the, we're anticipating that it might, it's like, we, if we did this, we would get feedback as from the community as to what this looks like, and then the expectation is that we would increase the hours, but maybe we would adjust them a little bit with some better feedback from the community.
Staff would like to, um, survey the community to see what works best for them as well. I don't know if that's part of any long-range plan, or if this is something that they could do independently. There's been discussion about that. We just don't know. We're just literally are trying to put one foot in for the other right now.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, this is a, a temporary thing, and the thing about trying to open and out, stay open an hour later here and there, is that this provides consistency, that it's literally just an hour shaved off.
Right.
Monday through Thursday, and then a couple at the end of the day.
I was more thinking of the future. Just as a way to kind of move the discussion.
Sure.
Certainly, um, um, maybe we could, I know you had something to say.
Yeah, I feel like I haven't had to really talk.
Of course, but, but, uh, what I'm trying to say is, we should probably hear one or two more comments on this. And then either agree to approve it, make, make an edit, and then move on.
Sure, yeah.
So, uh, I'm, I'm willing to approve this, but what I would just ask is that, um, when we publicize this, that we have a mechanism to get really good feedback from the community in that we gather that, and that is, that is reported back to us, to the library staff and to, um, us as trustees, so that we can, um, make better, more informed decisions going forward about what our future hours should look like.
And that, that, that's a really good idea, and I think to add to that, um, is that I, we also, uh, the library's been robust in, in the director's monthly report, all the comment sections. Well, yeah, if everyone could be mindful to incorporate, um, comments by patrons which reflect their feedback on the hours.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks. So, and that way, it would be memorialized, at least in the director's report also. So, um, I guess I'll, I'm willing to accept a motion.
I'll accept a motion to approve the Grafton Public Library winter hours proposal.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and, um, any discussion on the motion?
Um, just thanks again for coming with a nice, clear.
And thoughtful, very thoughtful, and fair for the, for all the staff.
Proposal. It's better than just coming in complaining, right?
We, that's something that we've actually been really great about, um, since the beginning of October, is knowing that there's not, there's not one person who's designated to steer the ship anymore, and we all come together. And, um, I will give a lot of credit to Sarah Bannister. She's really good at seeing really far out and saying, this is going to be a problem coming up, and then gathering everyone together. Kara, even though she's, her last day is Friday, she's been working on this with us as well.
Oh, thank, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank Kara for us.
Yep.
Um, I will just caution the board in saying that, you know, um, I hope that there's no, uh, I, I do want to hold on to hours. I don't ever want to give up any ground, and I, I want to make sure that this isn't a concession, that, you know, in, in three, in, in three months or so, we go, well, we can't add more staff to get back to the hours that we had before. And you don't feel that that's going to be a problem, do you?
No, we would like to add staff, but we just need to have the bandwidth to be able to train them properly. Um, it does not help to have someone at a desk that doesn't know what they're doing.
Yep.
Um, and it doesn't have all the information. They need to do the job well.
And I'm with you on that, Aaron, as well. I'm wholeheartedly in agreement with that comment.
No, we.
Any further discussion on the motion regarding the, uh, reduction of hours, uh, the winter hours? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried. Awesome.
I'm back to the library.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
You too.
All right, um, approval of minutes, um, excuse me. Do I have a motion to approve the non-executive session minutes, just the regular session minutes of November fifteenth?
So moved.
All right, motion made by Aaron, uh, seconded by whom?
Second.
All right, seconded by Doug. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All right, um, Shannon, I'm just going to ask that on the header, we're required to put where the meeting was, and if you could just include Room A on the final approval minutes. I think, uh, just the Zoom, I don't even know if it's the full hyperlink, but just the meet, the, uh, meeting ID number, and if there was a password as well. And, um, that's pretty much it. Um, before, um, any, well, any other discussion? All right, before, uh, voting on that, I'll just, um, I'll just throw it out there that in my opinion, uh, moving forward for the next regular meeting, that I think the, the purpose for which we called executive session is, is now, um, complete, and that we're ready to proceed in the next meeting with, um, approving the executive session meetings of November fifteenth. If anyone had any comment on that.
I'm not sure what the question is.
In other words, they don't remain, uh, private forever. In other words, I, I think that, and, and that's for both meetings, that, that the purpose which we met for is now, has been addressed. And, and it's sort of like a closed item, that it's not an ongoing thing for which there would be a public purpose to keep those, you know, um, from being approved. In other words, executive session minutes eventually get approved. In other words, these don't include the executive session.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, these are just the open session minutes, but executive session minutes, if there's a public purpose for which they would, for some ongoing reason, would need to be kept from being approved and made public, that would be a reason to, to just hold on to and not approve the executive session for those two meetings. But it looks like we address the issue at hand. And it's like a clo- it's like a closed item, and that we've completed the purpose for which we went into executive session, and that we would be ready to proceed with, with, um, at the next meeting, voting on the executive session minutes.
It, I don't know that that's ever been, is that required for us to write up minutes from executive session and then make public?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, then yes.
They weren't very detailed, like, I thought it was just-
No, no, they don't have to go into, i- it's not a, um.
Okay.
It's not a, not a commentary like our-
It's not a commentary. It's just, it's just the items that were addressed and that what be, what was the outcome and what were the votes.
Okay.
A lot of these are pretty much kept at a high level.
Great.
So, I just wanted to, to put that out there, so, uh, Shannon, at the next meeting, if you could just, you know, get those prepared, that would be awesome. So any further discussion on the motion to approve the regular session minutes of November fifteenth? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. November twenty-ninth regular session, um, minutes, um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the November twenty-ninth, uh, minutes.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by John, uh, seconded by Aaron to approve the regular session minutes of November twenty-ninth. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I will add, um, keeping Shannon busy, the, the Zoom link, or at least the meeting ID number. And it, um, under excused, uh, if you could put, uh, Doctor, Dr. Theseda, um, the title there. And I think I ended up with my, oh, actually, it was only a one-page. I was looking for a second page. It was only one page.
It was just that one page.
It was a one-pager. Okay, yeah. All right, uh, any further discussion on approving, um, November twenty-ninth? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Um, approval of bills, I will, uh, accept a motion to approve warrant number twenty-one for two thousand seventy-seven dollars and five cents.
Can we do these in bulk?
Uh, I, yeah, we could.
I don't know, because.
All right, yeah, no, we could. We, we could.
Just do them all five at once.
All right, uh, all right, so I, I will, I will actually accept the motion to approve, uh, bill number warrants twenty-one through twenty-five in the amounts stated in the agenda, and with the sources of funding stated in the meeting packet.
Perfect.
All right.
So moved.
So moved.
Oh, wait. Doug's got it.
So Doug, Doug, Doug. All right, so, so was that John seconded?
Yes.
All right, Doug made a motion, John seconded. You are the king of the consent agenda here. Now, that's a great way to do it.
Especially for, yeah, warrants.
Yeah, um, I know there had been questions in the past, but, um, this is a good way to do it. Um, any discussion on, uh, the motion to accept all five? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Declare the motion carried unanimously. All right. Okay, um, item five, ongoing business grant updates, M P L C P building program grant update. I know we've been having that as a, as a placeholder, but I'm not aware of any, any updates on that.
Was that the cupola? Like, what's?
No, that's Mass Historic. That's the next one. That's Mass Historic. I guess, um, where are we with the lead, the lead certification? That's HVAC needs to be fixed before we get the leads money.
I can just say, we have a building committee meeting, um, next month.
Okay.
And the lead certification and the remaining punch list is on the agenda for those.
Okay.
Lead certification, I know we've, I think we're all set for lead silver.
How much money was there? A hundred and something thousand, a hundred and sixty?
I think it was about a hundred, yeah, I think about a hundred and sixty.
Okay.
Um, and the purpose of the building committee is to either accept the lead silver or to push towards leads gold.
Oh.
Um, but I think we're going to be with, it sounds like lead silver is
Okay.
kind of the, the building committee's recommendation at this point, but that's going to be discussed next month.
Is that the final meeting, or are there still some?
Going to be the final meeting is, at least as of now, it's the final meeting.
Okay. Make darn sure that it is before closing that out.
Yeah, I think there were two, uh, two punch list items. I think there were just two left. And the question was whether or not we just, um, accept the credit, and then the town has to deal with finishing the two punch list, or if we're going to go back to the builder and just require them to do it. So I think those are the only two open items.
All right, William, do, uh, any, any, um, input on, um, any closeout items that you may be aware of as far as expenses at all, or?
Nope, uh, I've got a call out to our project manager, Mark Sullivan. I'm just waiting for him to call me back to actually talk about those.
Yeah, I actually don't know what they are. I just saw the fact that there were two items and, and then the lead certification.
Yeah.
So who, who declares, who appointed, it was, was it Tom, Tom Meeting appointed that committee?
The town administrator.
Town administrator.
Moderator.
Tom Moderator.
Moderator.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So how does, how does it dissolve?
Good question.
And I, and I'm wondering whether it may not make sense to dissolve in January after getting out an annual report? That may, that's just a, that's just a hint, you know, to sort of tie things up in, in the final year. Okay, so when is that, um, meeting?
Uh, end of January.
All right. Okay. And you'll be, uh, William, you'll be speaking, um, with the, um, project manager?
Yep, once you call me back.
Okay, awesome. Okay. All right, Mass Historic, um, so, uh, William, I know that, uh, you, that's out to bid.
Yes.
The cupola. Any, um, timing update, or is that something that will start in the spring typically?
So, uh, the bid package is out. There's a site walk for interested contractors on January tenth. Bids are due January seventeenth, and we've put in there that we would like the work to start immediately.
Okay.
The thing with Mass Historic grants is the project needs to be done by the end of the current fiscal year.
Oh.
Or we need to have expended a certain amount of money, so we are really angling to have it done by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. All right, awesome. All right, thank you.
Well.
Awesome. All right, um, all right, five B, um, Carrie, did you have any other, uh, questions on the historic grant at all?
No, no, that's great. Um, that's great news that, um, we're accepting bids and we're going to get that going, so thank you.
Awesome. Um, five B flood remediation and construction, uh, two pieces drainage assessment for preventive measures, and then the HVAC. So, uh, William, if you could speak to the, uh, the drainage issues and, and what, uh, has been actually done back there?
Yeah, so I took a, a walk around the property with Paul Canoyer a couple of days ago. Uh, and he believed that a part of the flooding issue was the, essentially, filters on top of the drain. Uh, so I got the ASB built from the architect, sent those over to Paul, D P W. and out there. Uh, they added some stone to redirect the water into the drain, and they actually cut the filter off. The stone redirects the water and it stops debris from going in there, and it's an eight-inch pipe, so it's working like a charm now.
Okay.
Yeah, so what happened with the, the, the flood, uh, the flood that we had, uh, yesterday or Monday? Any, um, any evidence that the water was collecting in the wrong places? Any, I, I don't know, if you would know, but maybe the staff would know, or Shannon?
So the leaks that we had on Monday were actually back in the community room, under the green roof.
Yeah.
Not so much where we had the flood back in August, so.
I see.
That's an issue that we thought we closed out a year ago that has now popped back up.
Okay. I know that issue very well.
Yep.
Okay.
And so, um, how much rain did we get in this storm? It, it seemed like there was a lot of wind that made it seem like it was raining harder than it actually was at certain points. On the flip side, wind can blow water into, you know, um, areas that it doesn't belong, so.
There were roads, I saw a lot of water on the road, and there was roads that were cool, like, on, on Depot Street, they had it closed off for a bit.
I heard it close to five inches. I, I had almost five inches at my house, because I had a bucket that
Amazing, yeah.
Had a lot of water in it.
I didn't realize it rained that much.
Yeah, a lot of people, I thought, actually, Dr. Texera, I think, had flooding in her house, too.
So, so are we, are we, is it safe to say, um, is it accurate to say that the flooding that occurred in August, we were talking about a number of inches within, like, under an hour, maybe even forty-five minutes' time?
It was worse than that. It really was, I would say.
You mean this one or the last one?
The last one.
This one, um, this Monday.
Oh, this Monday.
I was just in Whitensville, next to South Grafton, and, I mean, it was coming down in sheets, very, very heavy, accumulated very fast, and I thought it was going to be even worse than, than what we saw in August. But, um, it seems like whatever they've done, because that's been the biggest worry of, of the staff, is we don't know what's going to happen when the next rain comes. And so I'm, I'm pleased to hear that there was not flooding like we had the last time.
Right. Sounds like it was done in the nick of time.
Right, and then, and it sounds like, and I walked back there, and it, I liked the way that the, um, that the stone did, it was not only a matter of, of, um, those filters being removed, but yeah, having the water directed to the, an open drain.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I do just want to throw out there, they've only altered one drain at the moment. It is our intention to do all three.
Okay.
Great. Awesome, thank you.
That's great.
Fantastic.
All right.
Just related, so, um, so that is really wonderful news, and I'm glad to hear that there's two other drains that'll be addressed too. Um, was there an assessment done of the doors? Because, you know, the, the exterior doors, you know, actually allowed the water in. So, like, we, we want the drain, obviously, to prevent the water, but if it does overwhelm the drain, you know, what remediation do we need to do for the doors to reinforce those?
Good point. That was a big discussion about whether they were.
Are they just, you know, are they, do we need to up, you know, make them stronger? I think they were built, you know, with a certain expectation, you know, based upon the architect's designs, but, you know, if we could spend a little bit of money to reinforce them and prevent this, having to go through this torture again of not having, you know, our rooms available, you know?
Uh, so those doors were also put in by Chandler, and so one of the punch list items is, uh, the door in the community room that rattles, and we've asked that when Chandler comes out to look at that, they look at the exterior doors as well.
Okay.
Uh, and they just have not been back on site. So, that, that is still on our radar. It's just one of those things that we haven't been able to get them to come out here and do yet.
Okay, but, but we want them to assess it for, like, the rattling, but also just to make sure they're, they're, they're going to be sufficient, okay?
When the building committee reviewed that, Mark, the O P M., uh, O P M., yeah, he's the O P M., said that those, that most exterior doors are not built to withstand, you know, standing water for long periods of time. So he did not think it was a failure of the doors, just the fact that it had six inches of water for, you know, an hour.
But if we know that that's a possibility, is it worth our, us, is it worth an investment for us to make them able to withstand that? Because we know that it's a possibility that it can happen, because it, it didn't happen already. And, and what would that cost be? I mean, we have to do a cost benefit analysis, right? But i- if- But i- if we could spend some money to make the doors really secure, wouldn't that be a good investment, like I?
In other words, an upgrade, in other words, considering an upgrade.
I, I think he, Mark implied like that's just not worth it, right?
Yeah.
That's not, that's outside the design.
But that's kind of a, a builder's response, like, this is rated for, for this, and you had six inches of water and it's not rated for that, so. We, we, who do you?
We can't. I mean, he suggested the, um, you know, the, like the sandbag that goes around it.
Yeah.
Like they do in, you know, hurricanes and stuff.
And, and we can't, we cannot, we must not have a repeat of August. I mean, the public has paid big bucks for this library, and, and I think patience is wearing thin through no, I mean, I know there's, you know, there's supply chain issues and, and things have to, and insurance claims and everything has to go in a sequential order. But this can't happen again, and, and it's, it's absolutely, I, I agree with you, worth looking into what is, even, even if it's a significant upgrade.
If it's overkill and we're, you know, it's just as an insurance policy, right, you know, that really secure the, you know?
I'll bring it up at the building committee also.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Um, alright, um.
I just have one question.
Yeah, sure, John, yeah.
Um, so do we know, or do we know that this, that the door is like the appropriate door, because I know that, or, or is that what we're waiting on them to come back out and, and double check?
Well, is it, when you say appropriate, that's the thing, so it's like, who considers it appropriate, like the building, the OPM thought it was appropriate, but?
Specifically, I guess, um, someone had speculated that it was not an exterior door.
That was the other side, I think, right?
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's on the teen side.
Right.
And I think that door actually has been okayed, I think it just wasn't installed properly the deep, on the teen side, right, was that right?
I think that's, I think that's right, the um,
And they had to fix it.
The sash thing at the bottom was not installed properly.
So that hasn't been flooding now?
It's been repaired since.
It's been, it's been replaced since.
And it hasn't flooded since then.
Alright.
Okay. That did get a little bit of water.
This time?
Yeah.
Okay.
How much breach into the building?
Uh, a small puddle, but enough that we're concerned about it.
Okay.
So we need to look at that one too, I guess.
I would, I would, I'm not the expert here, but um, having done the, the walkabouts more recently, I would guess that that might be, maybe it's still a gutter problem. Uh, because we were having the issue where the gutters seem to be filling with water, and then overflowing, uh, just like over the side, I think, and then collecting the water instead of draining down the gutter tube thing, you know, into the.
I think you're gonna get that a lot, though, uh, water just overwhelming gutters. I mean, it happens at my house, probably happens in a lot of places too.
But you, um, William said that one of the three drains were, had this new drainage, so maybe, or the other, is one of the other ones on the other side?
No, all three are on the children's room side. Uh, to your point, uh, there are some issues with the gutter, we've already called uh, a company that specializes in copper gutters to come out and look at them, because that's something we need to fix ASAP.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
To, to your point though, uh, the children's room door is an exterior door.
Okay.
Everything on that side is. Uh, we, we really wanna get them out to look at it though, just to know if there is something else that can be done. They might say you have the top of the line exterior door, it does everything that it's supposed to do, or they might say these are your options, I, I just don't know.
Yeah, and what are the costs of those options, and then we have to figure out what, how to fund it.
Thanks for that question.
Or if we wanna fund it, yeah.
Alright. Alright, moving on to HVAC, uh, any HVAC update?
The weird noises?
I, I know that Renaud has come out and that there were some issues with, that were going to be fixed, I guess, with the way the mechanism by which filters could be placed in, you couldn't slide them out fully before putting them back in. It's my understanding that was going to be addressed, so.
I'm waiting on a quote from Ken at Renaud on that, so we can get that work going.
Awesome, alright, and um, so, and, but that wasn't necessarily, we still don't know where the noises came from. But that could be, you may have heard about the
Yep, uh, so.
Intimist noises.
When Renaud was in changing the filters, they could, that noise actually occurred while they were in the ceiling, uh, so they heard it loud and clear. So they are aware of that issue as well.
Alright, did they make a guesstimate that it wasn't just a poltergeist?
Not that I'm aware of.
Alright, and, and uh, everyone seems to be stumped by that uh, noise, um, and when, what the source of that is, but who knows, maybe it is the filters, but you're saying that Renaud is coming out again?
But yeah, once we get a quote from them to do the work.
Okay. Gotcha, thank you. Alright, um, teen room carpet, I think this is the, and um, an update that we've been, I guess, waiting for the public, I'm crossing my fingers that we're getting closer to, um, actually pardon.
Is it teen room carpet or is it children's room carpet?
Uh, no, I, I see teen room carpet, but um, I guess.
Teen room, so.
Oh, I was, I was ahead of myself, I was, I was on community and children's room.
Yeah, teen room carpet, um, I think was very clear in, in John's photos, and I've actually had some feedback from a teen at the one oh seven, um, uh, Court of Honor. Um, Debbie introduced me to somebody, and she said, it's, it smells bad, it's disgusting. And I think in the last, you know, meeting minutes that I read, um, you know, it was supposed to be cleaned, right?
But it's very difficult.
So, the, the, what that teen had told me was, um, we, carpet is not really appropriate in there, she felt that um, if we got rid of the carpet, it would be easier to, to clean up messes, right? So, you're not gonna stop messes, um, unless, you know, we put in some preventative things, or not preventative, but you know, we talked about tables and cup holders and stuff, so that spills wouldn't happen as often, but they're still gonna happen.
Sure.
Because that's a high traffic area, so I don't know. Um, I guess I could go either way, I took a look at the minutes, uh, last, last month, and um, the cost was about two grand, um, maybe to do the entirety of it.
To replace it with vinyl?
Yeah.
That was, that was for the gaming room.
Gaming room, yes.
Yeah, so we're, so we're not talking about the entire teen carpet, just the gaming room.
The gaming room.
I know Debbie gave that proposal.
Yeah.
I think that it makes a lot of sense, I, I, you know, if we have.
Frankly, I'm reconsidering it, because I think I was against it before, and, and, because the discussion was surrounding, we have an appropriate carpet cleaner, we can just keep cleaning it, and that's.
But that wasn't really what she said, she said that it's very difficult, because you have to kind of time it, and then it has to dry over the weekend, and then it's still kinda disgusting.
Close it, uh, the room sometimes while it's drying, yeah.
It's not that much money.
I find it hard to believe it's only two grand, but
Yeah.
It's a pretty big room.
I mean, it can't hurt to, to see how much it is.
It, it is two, two grand.
Okay.
That was what she proposed.
So removing the carpet and installing vinyl?
Yeah.
That was, I have in, in the notes that it was just the materials cost for the flooring.
I see.
Alright, so that's part of the cost.
And that Debbie planned to send an estimate to the capital campaign for review.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, we haven't, I don't think the capital.
We're gonna drain that budget down, no, I'm kidding.
I, it's a perfect, I think it's a fine thing for the capital campaign.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
No, no, actually, um, kidding aside, it, yeah, I think, it sounds like aside from now that the building is, you know, open and complete, these are the type of items that seem to be a good fit.
Yeah, my only concern is, you, you have this uniform carpet everywhere, and then suddenly you get into that space and it's completely different, which I guess is not a big deal, but it's
Well, I.
I like the idea of continuity myself.
I think that, I, I thought I had heard that Debbie was proposing that we replace the entire teen room, because while the gaming room is the worst, we do have those other, um, tables along the, you know, the Upton street side windows, and I think I had pictures in there from the last walkabout, and it's, it's bad there too. And so it's not quite as concentrated, because it's not a little space where all the kids congregate, but that's the other place that they hang out a lot, is those tables. Um, so I, I'm not gonna speak for Debbie, but I thought she had mentioned something about, you know, if possible, wanting to replace the entire teen room, flooring.
So why don't we, so, um, should, could you go back to Debbie and say, you know, what is it that, what's the ask, like, would they like to have, like, so I guess, you know, just the, the gaming room, the gaming room and portions of the teen library? And can we get cost estimates for, you know, full cost estimates for the different options that they're requesting, so then we have some options? And, you know, because if it's, I don't know, fifty thousand dollars or, you know, whatever, it is, like, we, you know, we just, just wanna know, you know, what it is.
Definitely.
Yeah, I, I think we'd be willing to, willing to consider reviewing something based on the cost, but certainly the concern, um, if we take out the carpet is, it's, will it be safe, understanding that there's so many spills and so many muddy boots and things going through there, will it be, you know, vinyl be dangerous for people? You know, for the type of use that that area is getting.
And, and I guess we could look at, uh, the type of different surfaces that are sort of gritty, more gritty.
Sure.
Than others, like, you know, I think of some of those remediations of, um, uh, people's garage flooring.
Yeah.
You know, the difference between smooth wet concrete and those, those sort of gritty, uh, grippable surfaces. They're not cheap, but it, it may be something to, to look into that even with a spill, it wouldn't be, uh, as much of a hazard as just straight vinyl.
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, I also think if the main area could get cleaned, whatever, once a week, once a month, and that handles most of that main area, I think that's a good solution too.
Alright. Alright.
There's a cost with that too, right?
There's a time cost, I mean, we have the, we have the equipment, town has that extractor, right?
We do, but
But we don't have.
Maintenance also has three or four of the buildings to worry about too.
Yeah.
So it's, it's definitely a time cost consideration.
How, how much use does the extractor get?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't know.
But I think it's also the person to use the extractor, like, I think that's the problem, we don't have enough cleaning, like, we don't have a, like, a, a, enough cleaning resources for the library as it is.
Yeah, I ju, my point was, is this a routine thing that, that, um, facilities are? That's the wrong word, but do they do for the entire town, like, is it a routine thing?
Right.
Use the extractor, you know, twice a month, three times a month, you know, once a year, you know, never, it's just on request, I just wonder if it's a routine thing or not.
Yes, where would be a similar, but like, I mean, there's carpet here, but they don't get the traffic that we get in the library.
Yeah.
And schools don't, the schools don't have carpet though.
No, they have a library, no, they have carpet in the library, but I guess no one's probably bringing food and drinks in there either.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, we can, let's take a look and, and, you know, see what we can come up with, I, I think, um, again, put punch list, right? Um, and we'll keep on top of this.
Yeah, Debbie will be on top of it, since she's in there every day or whatever.
So, so, uh, William, um, even though it's not a, a bullet point, flood remediation, construction updates, I guess I'll throw at you. Um, um, any further along as far as, um, the rug replacement or the final touches on the community room and the, the children's room?
Uh, so the community room, uh, the carpet wise, no, I was told it was gonna be about two or three weeks, about two weeks ago. Um, so I've not heard anything since then.
Alright, and so what about the community room? Were you referring to the, the children's area?
I was referring to both there, just carpet in general.
Alright, so.
That's the only thing that's left, is the carpet?
But there are two different, there are two different patterns of carpet, it, it, did you get any sense one way or the other? Whether one of the carpets types would be able to be one, it, was it one room before the other, or were both necessarily going to be completed at the same time? If one of the rugs is, if one of the types of rugs is ready before the other, are they able to come out and at least address one of those two areas so that that area would be open versus, okay, awesome.
Yep, so we're just waiting for the carpet to come in.
Okay, on bo, both, both sides?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
But if the community room carpet comes in first, that'll get installed first.
Yeah.
Like, when it comes in.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what I was getting to, I didn't know if they weren't willing to come out until both were ready, is that gonna cost us more if they have to come out, do one room first and then come out again and do the second one?
No.
Alright, good.
Yes, no.
Okay. You'll, you'll notice a lot of bouncing around back and forth as far as the conversation, but.
But it's literally the carpet's on order, they're waiting for it to come in, and it just hasn't come in yet.
Correct.
Alright.
Yep, uh, the community room, yes, for the children's room, there was the added issue of, we're going to get a sample, see if the dyes match, and then we're gonna have to make a decision
Okay.
Based on that sample.
So most likely the community room, you know, will be done first, it should be, unless there's a real delay with getting that carpeted, okay.
Can I ask a question about the carpet real quick? I thought that it was purchased, and, you know, this was something that Beth had said a, a, a way back, but it was purchased because it's able to be pulled up easily, and then, uh, you know, in squares, and then put down, so it's not just one giant piece.
We do have some extra squares, but not enough to do the whole room.
So is, is it just, we didn't have the foresight to, that we were gonna need all these squares and now?
I don't think, that would have been a big investment.
There was some extra, but not enough to replace that whole room.
I mean, that's a big room.
And it's hard to find that style again.
No, they have the same style, it's just that there's slight dye changes, so they're worried that it's gonna.
Yeah, and for the children's room, we're only doing a portion of it. That's an added layer, whereas the community room, you're doing all of it.
But it doesn't matter if it's like a different.
Even if it's a shade darker, it doesn't matter, because it's all changing.
Right.
Interesting.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for your efforts on that, that's something I wouldn't even consider.
Well, that happened in my, that actually happened in my family room.
Yeah.
We had two rolls of carpet, I mean, it was, we just ordered carpet.
Yeah.
But it came in two rolls, and the second roll was a different, I mean, it was the same color, but it was slightly different. When they put it down, it's, you could see like two sides of the room, like that.
It's strange.
So William, do, do you have a calendar, if you haven't heard from them, and a certain date to follow up? What, what's your calendar date on that, if you haven't heard from them?
Uh, sometime next week, uh, because then we're square in the two, three week mark
Okay.
That they gave me, so.
Alright, thank you. Um, alright, um, moving on to, uh, five D budget, twenty-four budget, any budget items for current fiscal year? That's a, that's always a placeholder anyway.
That's something the director presents, so.
Yeah, and I guess just question, so, um, so I guess we would just have a placeholder in the budget for the director's salary, just, I guess, assuming the same salary, I guess?
Well, well, that'll be part of the discussion, yeah, that, that's, yeah, well, we'll.
But fiscal year twenty-four, that's where we, we're currently in, fiscal twenty-four.
Correct.
That's just where we are in our current expenses.
Right, so.
So are we saving money now that we have, did we save anything?
Once, once she resigned, we are, right, because we're not paying her once she resigns.
But on the, on the leave, we wouldn't be paying either, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, but yeah.
We're saving money on salaries, yes, um, but we're gonna be rolling some of that into uh, Susan being the acting, acting head of borrower services, if we can get somebody from Bibliotemp, we can spend the money there. Uh, calling Tempsen for desk coverage, so.
Okay, so it goes quick.
Yeah, it, it's really, we're just reallocating it to make sure we can still meet the needs of the library.
Alright. Any IT update? And, and I don't know, if there's no IT update, um, Aaron, I'll, I'll, I'll throw the question your way, that when we last went in, that there was some, there's some IT issues regarding various, um, it was various doors and things like that. And, and any IT issues that, that you're aware that have been resolved, that were kinda?
No, um, it was reported to me in November, I wanna say it was right around, um, was it right around Thanksgiving? I, I think it was.
Right.
That, that, um, the, the door schedule, um, wasn't going into effect. Um, so basically, none of the, uh, the the badge system also does the scheduling for the doors, it wasn't communicating with any of the badges or the door to unlock the door at ten, so, um, I forget what her name is, it, it escapes me, but Heidi, um, knew, fortunately, before they had the, the badge system in place, how to physically unlock the door, so they're still able to service patrons. But that door was a problem, because, um, it's the only way to get in and out of the library for the public. Staff could still badge in and out, because the badge systems, um, they don't rely on the, the computer to unlock the doors, they're all kinda, once you program them, like the, that computer can be shut down, all the badge readers still know to accept, um, you know, the badges. So, I'm not sure what, what happened, uh, after that, I was told that, um, they would have a service call and they would fix it, but it seems like it's working again, and, do you happen to know what happened?
So we called the town's locksmith, Purington, out to take a look at it, because they work on electronic door locks.
Fantastic.
Uh, I am still waiting for an update from Mr. Berger on that.
Yeah.
Um, but I know that they have been out and they're working on some sort of a proposal for a solution.
Yeah, so, it's, it's really, you, you have the computer in the director's office, which is just an interface for them to like pro, uh, program. Yeah, so it's, it's really, you, you have the computer in the director's office, which is just an interface for them to like pro- uh, program, and then there's a server that, that is in that small room there.
Yep.
Um, you know, I think it's a really easy solution to just restart that server, look at the services on it, and be done with it, with this conversation, but I'm not the one holding the risk, you know? Baton there, because who knows?
If you restart it, you own it.
Exactly, yeah. But it's not functioning at all, and shutting it down wouldn't change the, change the situation, it wouldn't change anything.
Okay.
So.
So Purington is coming out, you said?
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, it, it's great to have another vendor that may not be the one that charges this fifteen hundred dollars a service call, so hopefully these guys, uh, are cheaper.
Alright, um, moving on to capital campaign, uh, that would have been Dana, um, but I guess it can be Doug.
Yep, yep, um, so as a reminder to the, um, board, um, there is a Grafton Public Library naming rights policy, um, that we approved, I think, back in a couple of years ago, um, and that gave the capital campaign, um, the authority to solicit, you know, name rooms, solicit donors to name those rooms, um, and then, of course, put the recognition plaques up. What is unclear, I, I'm pretty sure we've brought many of those to this board a couple of years ago, but I looked through the meeting minutes and couldn't find them, so I think it's good to formally present those again to the board, to have the board formally accept them.
So I know that you had shown me the, a, a list of three rooms, but had that been distributed to the?
I have not. I have a motion that I was gonna give, and then I can distribute it to Shannon.
Alright.
So, I mean, these are all rooms I think people are familiar with. Um, so should I make a motion first and then?
Well, what rooms are we referring to?
Well, there's three, six, nine, there's thirteen rooms. I mean, they're all the rooms that we've got named, naming rights to.
Alright, so what, what is being, what would be achieved by a vote?
It's, it's part of the policy to do this.
It's part of the policy is to have the board formally accept the naming rights. I mean, it's a contra- it's kind of a contract that we have with the, uh, donors. That they're gonna get their name on the wall, and the wall's gonna be there, or the name's gonna be there for a period of time.
Alright, so, um, so by, you would be making a motion, but incorporating it by a list, or could you at least, for the record, name, name them?
I'm planning on doing that.
Yeah, and then give the list to.
Yep, that's what I'm planning on doing. So, yeah, I'd like to submit a motion to accept the following naming rights in recognition of donors' contributions for each of the naming rights. Um, the list includes the Wheelock Historic Reading Room, uh, Friends Corner, the main entrance slash lobby, children's room, community patio, children's amphitheater, children's program room, teen gaming room, local history room, large print reading room, director's office, group study rooms, staff break room, and tutoring rooms.
Alright, now I'm counting fourteen, right?
Okay.
Is that fourteen?
One, two, three, four.
You didn't miss any.
Fourteen, although I name group study rooms and tutoring rooms, and there's actually a few of those, right? There's like three tutoring rooms and two group study rooms.
Okay. Alright.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made by Doug, seconded by Carrie. Any discussion on the motion? No, what, what becomes of this? In other words, what is being achieved by this vote again?
Um, that you formally accept them. They end up going to you as the chair for signature.
Okay.
And then they just get, I guess, entered in the record.
Alright, so I sign what and give it to whom?
Uh, you will sign, um, I'm gonna have to reread the policy. I think you need to sign each of the naming rights that I can give to you.
Okay.
Um, which is kind of a, a form that says, you know, this is the, the donor, this is the naming rights, this is what gets.
And where does that go? And how's that memorialized?
That's gonna be another question.
Like, can we just include them in the minutes and then it's part of the?
So this is an internal thing. This has nothing to do with, like, having to send anything to NBLC or anything, this is an.
All internal, yeah. It's only internal to the board.
Okay.
But it would be a public record, so if somebody ever wanted to look, they could look back at our published meeting minutes and say, hey, twenty years ago, my dad, you know, whatever. It was a name for my parents or.
But you're right, the signed document presumably would just go into the minutes, I guess. I don't know.
We haven't been, we, we haven't been, this is a discussion for another day, but moving forward in twenty-four, we'll, we'll, we'll address the requirement for supporting documents to be part of the submitted minute, minutes.
Yeah.
We're not required to put a meeting packet together. That's how some people kind of address that issue.
Okay.
But moving forward, the supporting documents of a meeting really do need to be either housed somewhere that's accessible to the public. Typically, one way to do that would be to submit those documents almost as against a meeting packet with the approved minutes.
Like in advance or?
No, no, no.
At post?
No, no, not, and I, I used the term wrong, not a meeting packet, but similar to a meeting packet, would be a, a series of documents that would be attached to the approved minutes. That would be one way to achieve memorializing that on the, on the, at least the town website. And it'd be good to have that, those naming rights documents somewhere housed in the graftonlibrary.org website, too.
Yeah, I mean, I know, um, Beth had, the director had a Google Drive where she kept a lot of documents. I don't know if that's.
Nah, Google Drive is something separate. I, I would like to see it somewhere accessible to the public, just through a link.
Yeah.
But this emotion, alright, so motion, uh, um, any further discussion on the motion regarding these named areas, the, Aaron?
Yes, so what you have and you're submitting for the record is just, um, the rooms which we are offering naming rights to.
No, we.
Well, these are the, these are the ones that we've already accepted, like, we already have them.
That, that's what I, okay, that's what I wanna be.
There are a few rooms that we have not, we don't have donors for yet, and those will come in a future meeting.
That, that's fine, but my question is, um, are, are now all the names, you just named the name of the rooms.
Yeah.
You didn't actually name what they're being named off of or named after. So those are, those are, I'm sorry.
Was the motion made prematurely, then?
No, 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 so it's, we're not calling the Wheelock Room now, you know, the, the Ro- Roger Trayhan Room, because he, he's the one that donated to have a plaque there. Right? Cause he said the Wheelock Reading Room. Um, it's, so someone submitted an, an, a placard or a naming right for that, like Verizon or, or something, the Verizon Wheelock Reading Room? I just kinda wonder how, how that is.
You know, it's a good point, because the majority of the rooms do not have the name on them.
Yep.
Um, but we do have, I have to go look.
So why are we named, why, the, the, why would we be voting to then accept all these rooms, some of which are unnamed?
What? Well, they're all, they've all been, they've all been, the naming rights have been taken. So in each room, there's a recognition that says, you know, uh, what does our recognition thing say?
Well, it just, it has the name of the person who donated, but that doesn't mean that we named the room.
It's like, it's like the, uh, the, the teen, the teen tutoring room, you know, generously donated by.
Okay, so, so, so we're calling, saying naming rights, but it's really, um, who supported the room and gets a placard.
Yeah, we're not renaming the room.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point.
And the, and the plaques are all there already?
Yeah.
For these rooms, I've already listed, yeah.
Oh, my gosh, please, please go see the plaques. They're amazing. Sarah Bajer designed each one of them, is custom flowers and, and other.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I'd seen them, but I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So, alright, so are we, uh, any further?
Now, well, I would only comment that if, if there was a large enough donation where they wanted to name the room, I think we would consider that, right?
Sure.
I mean, that, that would be up to this board to accept it or not.
Well, not to trump somebody's, uh, somebody's already, uh, previously naming donation of.
Correct, like the community room. We do not have the community room named.
Okay, so they could.
That's a possibility.
But that's a possibility, right?
Okay.
Great.
Alright, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to clear the motion carried unanimously? Um, Friends Update, Carrie.
So the Friends, um, continues to be, um, very generous about, um, allowing the children's staff to utilize that space while the, um, community room and the children's room are, um, being worked on. So it has been challenging for the Friends, um, fundraising has been challenging, um, because they don't have, um, the space that they normally, um, u- utilize for the ongoing book sales. But, um, they did put together book bundles that were, um, offered during Grafton Celebrates the Holidays, so, um, so members of the Friends were there, um, for the entire time that the library was open from noon to four, um, and so, so some book bundles were sold. Um, they're still, um, available for sale, and I understand a table was set up in some of the glass cases, so, um, they're more visible, so that's wonderful, so thank you to the staff for allowing that. Um, but there's just, you know, a lot of things are on hold, like the vending machine in the Friends Corner, can't really move on that, um, so you're trying to brainstorm, um, other ideas for fundraising activities, so if anybody has a great idea for how the Friends can, um, you know, or fundraisers that you might be interested in, you know, please, you know, share those, it's, they're always, you know, looking for, for new, new and creative ideas.
Alright, cool. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay.
Uh, Walkabout, John?
Uh, so, good news, bad news. Uh, bad news, I didn't do the walkabout this month, um, but I figured I can probably do it before our next meeting, the, kind of the ad hoc meeting that we're gonna have.
Sure.
Um, if that's okay, cause I guess that, the good news is that it'll shorten this meeting. Um, I also did, just today, sent out the pictures from the last meeting.
Okay.
Um, which I, I was kinda doing things in the wrong order, and I didn't see, um, that we had the punch list already, and so a lot of the things, um, I think pretty much everything in that email, um, and a link to the pictures was just pointing out what we had already discussed, um, so there, there shouldn't really be any surprises there. And like I said, I think most of it's covered into the, the punch list anyway, so.
Awesome. And, uh, just quickly looking at that, um. Yeah, I noticed that, um, and this has to do with the, uh, the copper, uh, next to the teen, well, the, the area where the automated return, exterior return is right near the teen exterior door, I, I just swung by on my way to work the other morning, and actually, the water was actually kinda pouring out with, from the seams. We ta- talked about this just a little bit ago in this meeting, where the water's coming down so much that it will probably spill back either, either from behind or, or through the joints or whatever, that it isn't all going down, um, and there is some pooling with the stone or mulches, so. Again, you said that would be the copper folks, the gutter folks that coming, so.
Yep.
Alright, um, and then Shannon, the, on the punch list, the action item list, um.
I have a, so I have a question for you.
Yeah, sure.
The, uh, the chess tables look great. Did you take a photo of them? Because one looks damaged. I can't tell from the photo.
No, sorry, so, um, I, in the email, I outlined, like, all kind of like the issues. There were a couple of photos in there that are just kind of more informational, so one was the chess tables, um. One was like just the front of the library, just cause it was a nice picture at the time of day, so I thought I'd include that, um, and then the other one, I think, that was kinda not mentioned, was like, there was the, uh, the other installs that were gonna have the instruments on the other side near the, on, outside the community room.
Yeah.
So those, those I talked about as just being kind of a temporary hazard, um, I hadn't checked to see if we'd moved them yet, um, but.
Waiting for the concrete, right?
Yeah, my only concern at that time was just that, like, the, there were these mushroom shaped things, and so they were kinda top heavy.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, so I, I think we agreed at the last meeting to cover, cover them with a tarp for the winter, but they're gonna be installed still?
They are gonna be installed, and I was gonna ask William about that.
Okay.
Um.
Alright.
So we'll look into seeing if we can install them, otherwise we'll either find a new home for them, or we'll cover the mushrooms with a tarp.
Great.
Everything else is covered with a tarp, except for the mushrooms.
Yeah. See that? Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, alright, and we're ready to move on to the action item list. Shannon?
So I watched your previous meeting in November, and, um, I, I noted that you, everyone was pretty much in agreement that you wanted, um, a little punch list with priorities, just to keep track of, um, items from the walkabout, so that's what this is. It's just very informal, and I'm just putting notes in here about what I ask people to do and when, just to kinda keep track of those.
And I guess we could always, um, through our own recollection of maybe even meetings prior to that, whether there may be other items that we could just, um, add to that if, if needed. Thank you. I, I like this. I like having an Excel like this, it's really good, um, and then having the priority listed, too. Um, alright, new business.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, sure.
The QR codes, I know you've mentioned that they're, like, a fix just kinda stuck on there. Um, who was in, like, if someone's in charge of those at the library, and we think that putting in a nicer plastic thing for those to see, or let us know, cause.
I can do that, yeah. I, I, I haven't seen any walking around with painter's tape, just, you know, they all looked fine to me, but I'm gonna take a more detailed look at it.
But e- even in general, if, if we wanna get a little nicer, plastic, you know, whatever, frames for those things, let us know. The ca- let the capital campaign know, I meant, not us.
So, um.
Sorry.
New, alright, so, um, funding request, um, item seven, under new business, funding requests, uh, for state aid, twenty-one hundred, four dollars and thirteen cents for a hundred thirty damaged children's books. How did, so was that part of, was that water or just general damage and? How, I don't, are you familiar with this item?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I was asked to put it on there by, um, Sarah in the children's room.
Okay.
It, the, the damage is mostly just from, um, heavy use by children, um, some chewing on them.
Right.
Big baby board books, so.
Heavy use can be a code word for god knows what, right? Alright, so, okay, so, um, so, so those will be replaced, same, same, um. Let's say IBN number, whatever the number is called. Uh, is it the same books or similar?
I don't know if it's for the exact same book, but, um, I think she makes a determination based on looking at the circulation numbers for each book, if it was popular or not. Then she makes a determination maybe to use the money for a different ones, but if you want more detail on that, I could.
No, no, not really. I guess at a high level, um, I'm just thinking, I get, I'm, I'm thinking there must be some sort of quota of the number of books that we prefer to have available, both in number and variety and topic and, and age, so.
Right.
But why wouldn't that just come out of our regular?
I, I think this is an, an usual request, is my question. Do so many come offline at once? In other words, are we talking about the things that are in circulation? Would we normally have a, a chunk of a hundred thirty come off all at once? Is that might be the issue?
It may have been they were just collecting them for a while, um, and just holding it. I'm not sure why she specifically waited until there was a hundred and thirty. But I can get that information.
Yeah, could you? I'm, I'm, I'm not ready to vote on something without more detail.
Sure.
Um, as far as a funding request, as to how this is, and I think to your point, Aaron, how this would be different from normal circulation?
Circulation.
Sure.
But if they were damaged, like, in the flooding, like, that would be, that would be understandable.
Right, it's, it's not from flooding, right?
Right, and it would also be an insurance item, any damage to property, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I, I wonder if it's that they have time, you know, with, with the probably fewer people circulating through the, well, not circulating through the children's room, if they have more time to go look through their collection and, and kinda identify.
Yeah, in other words, they, finally having the time to do an inventory or, yeah.
I, I think this is, this, I would wholeheartedly support this, and if it's appropriate to, to pay for it out of state aid, um, but I, my question is, w- why isn't this part of the, of the book budget or expenditures?
Yeah, is it something that we need to budget for next year, you know, instead of?
Yeah, maybe the budget's, you know, gone, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
I, I think part of it is they had a large quantity damaged at one time, that kind of all came back from circulation, and they realized they needed to be replaced.
Okay.
So I, I think part of it was just the volume at one time.
Okay, alright. Yeah, um, and, and I'm not going to dig into the weeds, but I think that we've typically, as a, as a board, done some due diligence as far as getting some more detail when it comes to these type of questions about, um, you know, um, these type of items.
Sure.
I mean, it's not a budget buster, but, but to everyone's point, um, it's worth looking into and, and seeing what that number is compared to normal, uh, circulation. Seven B, twenty twenty-three library report and trustees report for Grafton's twenty twenty-three annual town report. This is, I added this to the agenda.
Yep.
Um. Karen, I think, penned, or maybe, well, she signed off on, that the annual town report, there's two pieces, is the, uh, each committee is required to, each committee and each department is required to put forth a report in the annual town report. So, back to back last year, twenty twenty-two, there's a library trustees annual report, and then there's a library report. I mean, I could look back in, in the minutes and thi- and, and pen that. Who penned that last year?
So the direct, so director writes one for, for the library report, and then the, all the, um, committee chairs, you know, uh, through town, so in, in your case, the, um, the, the board of librarians, she's.
Yep.
Trustee's chair would, would write one.
Yep.
And so I've written a few of them in the past, no more than three or four. Doug's probably written them in the past as well. Karen probably wrote last year, so, um, really, you just kinda have to meet the format that the town requires and make sure you have the, the right kinda content, and, you know, as long as you don't deviate too greatly from, you know, what's required, I think, um, you're, it's under your purview to write that.
Yeah, and, and I, I feel comfortable doing that. I just wanted to clarify that, and honestly, in my other committee, I did the last four reports from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. I'm relieved to not have to do it for that committee.
Sure.
Um, and so I'm, I'm used to, I'm used to the process.
Great.
Um, and so I'm, I'm totally cool with it, so.
Yeah, I mean, Beth's was usually fairly long, like, I don't know, two or three pages. Ours was usually a paragraph, you know, half page.
Yeah, and so I, so I'm, I'm okay with mine and, I mean, ours, and, and then we can come back and vote on that in January, um, you know, in that, I would submit that.
I don't know if. I think you need to vote on that. It's just, it's just a duty as you as the chair that you need to, uh, provide a report.
It was more as a courtesy, I know, than some other com- It was more as a courtesy, I know, than some other committees sometimes will.
When does it do?
Yeah, that's.
Typically end of January, but you know what?
As long as, if we have a meeting before, we can present it.
And, you know, there's, there's some wiggle room there, you know, but I don't, I would not want to push the staff to have to accept a late report to squeeze it in just because we've missed some fall, some deadline, you know? But more importantly, we're without a director right now and it's a very thorough, multiple page report that we don't have an author for.
I'm happy to write it. I've been writing the monthly.
Oh, alright.
So I'm sure it's just, you know, a beefed up version of that. I can take a look at the last one and I can fill in the blanks.
Thank you.
That'd be fantastic. That would be great.
That would be awesome. That would be really awesome. You're totally crushing it. I mean, that's, yeah, that's, that's a significant task. It's really like a must and for you to be doing that is awesome.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
It does not have to be three pages.
No.
It does not.
The current monthly report that I was given, that's pushing four pages, so.
It's, that could be pairback, yeah, it's, you know.
I will say it's in the annual report, it's, you know, it's important to quote numbers and stuff like that, right? Increases, whatever, just to highlight the use of the library.
Alright. Awesome, thank you so much. Alright, now, so I'll, I'll still, you know, distribute it, you know?
Great.
And so Xerox lease and rental, Shannon?
Eileen, head of accounts, asked me to add this to the agenda because apparently our Xerox lease right now comes out of a revolving account that's funded by money that patrons pay for.
For printing and copies. Xerox, but they're not using that much, right?
Right, so right now I guess there is a negative balance and she asked me to put it on here so that we could discuss possibly moving, having that being paid out of a different account. She suggested a gift fund.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm not super familiar with all the different accounts that we have yet, so I will leave that up to you as to what.
Did you give any?
I was gonna suggest the gift account because the director used to use that for various types of expenses, you know, to cover costs that wouldn't necessarily need to come to the board or vote.
So what period of time are we talking about and how much money do we know?
She's looking at going forward.
Okay.
Having that coming out of the gift account. So, so this period, this month, it was about a thousand dollars. She says it fluctuates between, you know, several hundred dollars to about a thousand, so.
The lease fluctuates? The lease?
The, the payment. So it depends on how many copies were made, color copies, but the actual lease payment is around six hundred dollars.
And that wouldn't come out of the gift account that's already been budgeted for.
Okay.
Right?
She didn't, she didn't explain it that way to me. She said everything.
I think that'd be a big expense to come out of the gift account to pay for the copiers.
Okay.
And the copiers, when did, when were those leases up? Because right, weren't we talking about dropping one of those leases?
We were talking about that.
At the end of the lease, dropping one of them.
But it didn't save us any money, right? Didn't they say it wouldn't?
That's if we bought out the lease.
Yeah, buying out the lease wouldn't have saved us money and I forget when the lease ends. So we were on the hook, I think, for at least another year? Is that?
I'd have to look at my notes.
Alright, okay. So yeah, so we're talking about, yeah, we're talking about a chunk of change.
So usage wise, right, I think what I'm hearing is the staff tend to be the reason why that would fluctuate because if it's patrons like doing tons of copies and prints, right? Generally, we would get money for that. So I think it's really staff usage, which is fine because that's what, that's why we have them. And I think that the idea was we would go, move down to one to reduce that expense.
Right. Yeah, so it would be beneficial to find out for budgeting purposes. It will definitely be a finite thing, so I'm not expecting that you find out, Doug, now. But if you could volunteer, be the point person to look up when that lease ends unless you can find out, Shannon.
My note says FY twenty-four, which would be through June, but I could be wrong. I'll, I'll check, Shannon and I can double check.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything you can contribute, William, regarding copiers and how the, how the town leases all their copiers and why if there's some synergy there with the library?
Not particularly. That is how the municipal center does their copies, copiers as well. We lease them and then depending on usage, the cost fluctuates a little bit. So it is in line with what we're doing in this building.
Okay, okay. And each department manages their own copier budgets?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
So I guess would we be okay, like if the, the base level lease expense is covered in the budget, but then what she's asking for, was it Eileen asking for it? If Eileen is just asking for the additional cost to come out of the gift, we're okay with it, but I think we'd need a little bit of an idea of what the money.
So we're talking about an additional delta of up to four hundred a month because you're saying it's a thousand, so an additional delta up to but not necessarily every month being four hundred.
And how much do we have in the gift fund?
We don't manage that one, I don't think, do we, Doug?
I don't think so.
No, that was, the director had access to that. Eileen would know.
Okay.
I'll just point out, so unless I'm mistaken, even if we get to the point where we can remove one of the copiers from the lease, that'll reduce like the base price of the lease, but in theory, the usage, you know, even though it's fluctuating, that'll still be the same.
Of course.
It'll just be consolidated to one of the.
Right, and I think our only concern was if that, if that busted, you know, if it went down, we would, we wouldn't have a backup.
Yeah, but that's why you lease them because they're responsible for maintaining them.
Yeah, so, alright, are we ready then to move on to policy update? Aaron?
So not much from the policy committee. We have just two members, John and I. And I think it would behoove this board to either consider adding someone new. I hope that the staff would wanna still participate in policy discussions. Doesn't necessarily have to be the director going forward. Although the director's input was fantastic because one of the qualities we look for in a director is, you know, writing effective, you know, policy and John and I are not policy writers. We're more advocates for the public and trying to make sure that policies make sense for their constituents, but you know, at this point, unless we have a third member, I don't know how many, how effective we're gonna be as a policy committee. And I'm not asking for another trustee, for sure.
So the question I have for you is that where do we, unless I missed it in our own policies, where and when did we define the, what constituted the policy committee or policy subcommittee? As far as the number and makeup of that, so that when we, when, if someone exited, you know, who do we backfill them with? So is it?
Yeah, it's, we've always had the director on that committee, which has been tough to not have the director as part of the committee. I think that's really kind of where, where we're having difficulties. And if it was the director and one other, you know, member of the board, then that might be okay. It's just, you know, without a director, it makes it difficult to write policy.
So let me ask you this. Are we at a point where not to, not just to, you know, kick policy to the curb, but do you feel comfortable? And you, you were, you've been doing policy, right?
Yeah, yeah, Aaron and I have.
Yeah, and so do you feel comfortable, at least in the short term, tabling these items until we have a director? Or there's certain must priority items that we really need to be moving forward on that are high priority items?
That's a great point. There are policies that we've worked on for a long time and worked very hard on that just kind of stalled because of the change with the legal counsel as well. So there's kind of a lot of things that are required to operate as a policy committee.
Right.
And that was one of them. And also, you know, we added in the review from the from the union as well. And then trying to also solicit feedback from the board and then get that. So that was kind of pending as well. There's a lot of things up in the air for policy committee right now. Makes it very difficult to operate. I, I would like to get a hold of the policies that we we've already given to legal counsel and either if they've already approved them, then we'll take them back and bring them to this board. And then we can agree to vote on those, but I wouldn't say we have any active new policies to.
Do you, do you keep a so-called punch list of those?
I don't personally, but Beth and Debbie were keeping that.
Yeah, and that would be something that you'd want to get your hands on. I was looking, I noticed recently that's that some of the approved policies during my tenure have finally made it to the, either approved for the first time or updated with the current date have made it to the website, but, but I can't, and I was happy to see that, but I can't be sure. I don't have something to compare it against, so I don't know, you know, I didn't dig through the minutes, the draft minutes and such to know whether, or the final submitted minutes to know whether there are any that have not been posted. I only know what's there, but I don't know definitively whether that constitutes everything that we voted on, at least during my tenure.
I have to take a look. We haven't voted on much.
Yeah, didn't Beth have like a table list?
Yeah.
And it had like dates on when they were approved?
You gotta imagine that's tough for John and I to have access to, right?
Yes.
That was all kind of.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think most, most of the policies are on the website.
Right.
There's a few that either have been developed or been revised, that are in progress that Aaron was referring to.
I was referring to one set where we actually approved them.
But they're not on the website yet.
And that may not be on the website yet.
Oh, I don't have access to posting there, but certainly I'll follow up on that.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
I thought there was one policy that Beth had mentioned that that was something that was kind of a priority for her, maybe collections management or something like that? Does that ring a bell, Aaron?
It was, I think it had to do with, I think it was collections policy, but something to that nature. But the way that she had written it based on, it had a lot to do with book banning, right, and people saying, you know, that they disagree with how the library's selecting their.
Yeah, the appeals process.
Not the appeals process. We have something in place already for this, but she felt that with all the things that are bubbling up in our communities, that it's a good idea to make sure this is really well thought out. And she has a really great draft on that, but it's, our initial policy is a one pager. This one is like a seven pager, okay? And that's kind of where we left it. We haven't really spent a lot of time on that because it's very meaty, it's very big. And there were others that we wanted to kind of finish first before we dove into that. Is that?
Yeah, I think that was it. I think, and that's, just to be clear, I think that one was an entirely new policy, whereas a bunch of the other ones we had.
Material selection policy.
Or material selection, maybe that was it. But a bunch of the other ones we've worked on recently were more revisional and things like that and updating them, but so it, it sounded like it would be something that we would want to get done sooner rather than later.
To get those ones that we are pretty much ready to go to for board approval, right?
Yeah.
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 That would be great. And then when we get our new director, that meaty one that really needs a lot of thought and, you know, insight, it would be a great first one to work on for the new director.
And also a great thing to maybe bring up during the interview process in a very, you know, appropriate way.
Right, that's right, cool.
And then to your earlier point, Aaron, about this difference between serial conversations and polling, very subtle. But my understanding was about the manner in which, like, let's say I or others just randomly throw information your way. There's nothing you, that would prevent you from receiving it. I think the idea was that polling had to do with taking information and then either, even individually, asking people what they thought of something and then collecting it. And, and the caution was against in the cases, the open meeting law cases had to do with when it reached a quorum among a board, even if it wasn't contemporaneous, okay? And so the advice was, don't even go that road, down the road of even soliciting one piece of polling from anyone because you never know at what point people have bounced ideas back and forth. And that whether you know, whether you're aware or not of whether a sort of serial conversation existed, you would not, you don't know what you don't know. And so that the advice was, don't do it at all. And so, because you would never know at what point a serial conversation would have been reached. That, that maybe us three talked about something, I submitted to you, you think I'm submitting it. And then you bounce it back to Carrie, you think there's only three involved and there could be four or five. And so that the open meeting law is, is, says, you know, you, you really shouldn't even go down that road because you would know, you really wouldn't know when that quorum would be reached, you know? And so it does put people, it does put you at a disadvantage not knowing what people's thoughts are on things, but the, the idea is that to avoid to avoid seeking people's individual input, then for you to then come up with a consensus, even if you don't then distribute that to anyone else. And I'm not sure if that was your takeaway. I, I think that
No.
It seemed like a mixed message that the, that the email and then the two case laws, two pieces of case law were were in contradiction with one another.
That's great.
You know what I mean? In other words, I, I think that the, in total, it was as clear as pea soup, you know what I mean? It, I don't think it was definitively answered questions, but I think it, it, there was, there was a lot of caution put forth about having people avoid asking questions or input even of individual members because it, it risked reaching a serial conversation and that is tedious as it might be to bring everything back to the main board or subcommittee, it's sort of our responsibility to do that. And so I'm not sure if that was your takeaway. That was mine.
Well, not my takeaway at all. And I think that's, that's the problem, right? Because you just told me that we can interpret this, these cases either way, right? And I felt like I said, I want to send out drafts to you guys and you said, no, you can't do that. And Dr. Teshad said that as well. Because, you know, we've had, we've operated on boards before and you can't do that. I studied this and you can't do that and you can't do that.
But if I could interrupt for a second, I didn't know whether that was for the purposes of seeking or eliciting feedback. In other words, I didn't necessarily think that if you sent something out as part of what could be considered a meeting packet, that would probably be permissible. What, what you don't want to do is either eliciting feedback from people or on their own, those individuals who are, have received those handouts
Yeah.
starting to communicate with you about what their thoughts are. And then before you know it, a quorum has then weighed in.
Yeah, I guess you're right because what I was really looking for, okay, is, is not, hey, guys, here's a draft and, and, and you take, you take a look at it and that's end of discussion, right? So the idea is that we have a policy committee and we really want your input.
Right.
You know, because we don't want it when it comes to vote for the board because that's kind of counterproductive. We want it, you know, when we're meeting as a policy subcommittee to discuss how the policy should be written. So how do we get input from the board when we're?
It seems really inefficient not to be able to collect feedback, one-on-one, you know, via email or something like that, because ultimately, ultimately, you're gonna come back to the board as a whole in an open meeting law to approve something and to discuss it.
And really what it is, is like, the other side is honestly tough cookies. If you don't like what we've come to you with, then you can vote no.
Right.
So you have, you're putting your faith in the policy subcommittee, right?
Right.
To write policy that we think the board will, will approve. You either approve it or you don't approve it. It's not an editing session. It's not a session where you can go and say, Aaron, page twenty-six, this isn't quite right. Can you come back and rewrite this? That's not what this is for, one hundred percent. So I think that if, if we want to do this without necessarily eliciting feedback over email and say, hey, guys, here's the policy, send me your feedback, fine. I'll agree, maybe we don't do that. But I will say that the policy subcommittee is meeting about this policy, right? And we do meet in, in public session, you know, and I think we're allowed to have a quorum, right?
I think what, it, and this is nuanced too, is that if all of a sudden now we have a quorum of the main body
Sure.
present within the. Present within the subcommittee, does the main body have to be posted as well, probably?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have to.
But we sometimes wouldn't know, we would have to make darn sure we communicated that to you, who would be present so that we could effectuate that proper posting.
So the only way that we're really gonna be able to get feedback from any of the board members
Right.
is really, uh, by attending our policy subcommittee meetings. And when they come to the board, you either vote yes or no, and there's really no kind of editing on the spot. I think that's kind of how it has to be. You can read it ahead of time to kind of form your own opinions. But it's, I guess, I'm not.
I know, I, I think that throughout the years, the open meeting law has, has been presented with, there's been a lot of cases that have, um, presented much more nuanced advice.
Yeah.
And, and has, the open meeting law has expanded in, in exponentially because of this nuance, and, and it necessarily creates, um, what we would consider inefficiencies. But, um, Attorney General's Office is basically saying, well, okay, it's inefficient, but
Yeah.
we're kind of stuck with, um, what used to be more efficient processes. Now we're, we're forced to do more in, in open session, but that's, that's.
Okay.
That's what they're saying is required of us.
So I think I'm ready to close this, this item.
Alright, sure.
We've, we've, um, had this for, you know, a, a few of our meetings, and this is great.
I know.
Um, and, and I'm, I'd like to close it in a way that we agree, um, that once the policy has, has gone to policy committee, it's gone to legal, it's gone to, um, uh, the, um, sorry, the staff.
Union.
The union, right? And we've taken all that, that feedback and corrections, understanding that you've got representatives from the trustee board, staff, legal, everybody. It really, once it comes to the board, it's not time for input feedback, right? I think we can probably work in, um, to have one or two people come to policy committee if we have to or discuss them, um, purposefully, but I will never solicit this board for feedback. I think that's what we've decided on any policies.
And I agree with that. I, I mean, it's sort of like the analogy would be, be, um, you know, you don't, you don't do committee work on top meeting floor.
Sure.
You know, that, you, you, it's there.
Not supposed to. Plenty of people do.
Yeah, so many, but it's, it's been vetted out in a million ways to Sunday, and that it's time to vote yes or no on things.
I think that's fair.
And not, not to say that it's a rubber stamp, but trusting the process.
Trusting the process, but I would love to have conversations with every one of the board members if they feel strongly about any of the policies we're writing.
I'm, I, I would just like to add
Yep.
that the, the, the response from, uh, the, the response, I forget who this was exactly from, but the, the open meeting people
Yep.
was very, seemed contradictory. Uh, I mean, there's literally a sentence in here that says, "If feedback is provided to the chair of the subcommittee only and is not shared between or among a quorum of the subcommittee or the board outside of a properly posted meeting, then such communications may be permissible."
And that's what I just said, right?
Yeah.
You guys can totally talk to me about policy, and that's it.
Right, and, and then, then the thing is, is that that was, that was the Attorney General's Office staff members' synopsis, but the case law, the two cases in question were much more straightforward, and so I, I, not, not to trash anyone, but I, I think that there was a, a disconnect in that, that the opinion of the AG's office permitted more, but the actual two cases were very unequivocally hardcore, this is what you cannot do. You know, and that's where I, I thought the disconnect was, and so, um, but yeah, anyway.
Alright, so I think we're all in agreement.
Alright.
Yes.
And so, um, directors' report and stats, I don't have any question other than that there's a ton of work being done by a lot of dedicated people. And I love the feedback from the public, how that is, uh, documented. It, it really gives a nice local, for lack of a better term, folksy flavor to it, but that's what the library's all about. I'd like to hear that public feedback. I didn't have any comments or questions regarding the numbers in the document, if anyone else. Alright, no public input?
I, I have one last question.
Yeah, sure, Doc.
Probably for William. So this is related to the repository of Board of Library trustee documents. Like, does the town support? Like, can we get a, a, a shared drive where we can keep our documents? Or should our documents by default go to wherever the director has their documents? Like, where do we keep? I mean, it's not all gonna go on the, the, it's not all gonna go on the, uh, the library website.
But, I, I mean, data, data, it doesn't, I mean, storage isn't expensive these days, and I'm wondering, um.
No, but like if we wanna, if we wanna know where the, um, policy list is, like the hard copy, like the, the electronic copies or, like where all these minutes, I mean, the minutes, I guess, are on the town website.
Uh, yes.
It seems like there'd be some documents that would be for this board to have access to in, in one place, and where would that be?
We have that. At the library, we have an administrative file with all of the.
Right, but does this board have access to that?
You wouldn't unless you requested it, I mean.
But we could.
Yeah.
Okay.
You would.
So maybe that's an answer.
You, you would request the document and it would get sent to you. No board or committee has access to the town server.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
No, I agree with that. No, I realize that, yeah.
Right, so like, like, uh, when the director left, like, all the usernames and passwords and all that private stuff, I guess that kind of went your way, but I would have no business need for that.
But let's say these.
But we have it.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. So we should be submitting documents to Shannon that need to be archived or stored.
Such as?
Such as the naming rights document that came out earlier, right?
Yeah, we have a whole file just for Board of Trustees on our shared library network.
Alright, do we, do we have, um, for those important documents and things, and we can discuss it at another meeting, do we keep paper? I mean, I, I mean, we have some room for paper, you know, um, I would hate to see a system crash, you know? I mean, I would hate to see a system crash and all these archived documents only be electronic.
Right, um, as far as I know, we do not have paper printouts, um, and which is surprising because looking at the former director's, um, filing cabinets, there are a lot of files in there, so I'm surprised that they weren't printed out, but if that's something you want me to do, I'm happy to do that.
We made a transition, um, I want to say, three or four years ago as a board, because we used to have all the paper, and I bet that's where a lot of that paper came from. Um, it just, uh, we had one, one a month, and it was this thick.
Okay.
And, you know, one of the, um, board members said, you know, can we digitize this stuff? And, and the previous, um, person who was doing that, um, she, uh, part of her duties to the board was to print all that, all these packets and have something on her desk, and we got rid of that, so I think that's probably why that's, that's fallen away.
Okay.
And, and I think it's all the better, but to your point, um, yeah, I mean.
Town server.
Trust, trust in the data, right? Trust in the cloud.
Try finding the town report, well, aside from the library reports, try finding the town reports.
Yeah.
Prior to when we had a couple, couple glitches ago, and we don't go back before, I don't know, twenty twelve.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I'm surprised that, um, there's still stuff on Google Drive in that we haven't moved to Microsoft three sixty-five yet.
We are supposed to be using Microsoft three sixty-five, but a lot of staff are, are still in the process of transitioning.
Are they moving it manually?
Um, they, yes, each person has their own account, and so everybody's kind of in the process of deciding what they want to move over. I mean, I, I operate by, I own, I don't have anything in my personal.
Sure.
One, one drive. I just keep everything on the.
So where were, where were the board stuff though?
The board stuff is not in Google Drive. It's or, or OneDrive. It's on the library server.
But we got a, a, a Google link from you.
That was just because I created that, um, particular document so that I could share it with you, and it could be live, that you could edit it. If you want, I can migrate it over to OneDrive.
It was just a question. I don't have any preference. I just wondered when that was gonna happen and why we're still using Google.
Yeah, I think this Jonathan from IT was in the other day, and I, he was mentioning that you kind of need to get on that.
Okay, awesome, great. All the right discussions.
So, next meetings, uh, policy subcommittee to be determined, or, and then friends as well.
Yeah.
And then our next, um, well.
Can we just go back to policy, uh?
Yeah, you had one more.
Yeah, Shannon, um, could you, through the administrative offices, um, determine if there's a, a staff member, at least, uh, until we find a director who'd be willing to provide input on, on policy? I don't know the next time we're gonna meet without a director, um, but certainly we have outstanding policy that, you know, we could finish. And it'd be great to have a sta-, a staff member as part of that committee until we find a director. Yeah, I, I did mention it to, um, Debbie a few times, but she hasn't said yes or no, so I'm guessing it's, uh, probably a no. Yeah, so we'll see.
And then, um, alright, so policy subcommittee and then friends, alright, and then Board of Library Trustees. Well, um, the regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, but we will get together before then. I'll, I'll see about, um, one thing we can do, go, going back and forth, is, is determine what everyone's schedule is for the next meeting. You know, an interim meeting.
Yep.
Just regarding the director stuff, so.
Um, I should have the friends, next meeting for the friends in one, one minute.
Okay.
January sixteenth.
What day of the week is that?
Tuesdays, at seven thirty PM.
Okay.
So our next meeting is January twenty-fourth?
At seven, but we're gonna meet before then at some point, just to have a focus meeting regarding the action items.
I understand that. I will not be in town on the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
But I'll send an email separately.
Alright, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. So moved, alright.
Second.
Alright, second, alright. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose to clear the motion carried. This meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-three PM.